Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. And while the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioners Merk.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Giagiallo absent.
Okay. And Kathy, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Might as well get started.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. First up on the agenda is Public Communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak as a part of public communications? All right, none seen, so we'll move on to the consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from August 15th. The recommendations approved as submitted. Does anyone on the commission have any adds, changes, or deletions from the minutes we were provided with?
I'm over approve the minutes.
We have a motion for approval.
I second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Sherry, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Merk.
Here. Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
All right. Could you pass that down to James? Very good. Next on the agenda, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have one site that will be a part of our discussion this evening, and that is the property at 204 and 206 Kenyatta Street. Commissioner Merk, would you like to start?
Sure. I'm very familiar with the property, have ridden past it many times, and have had no ex parte contacts.
I've visited the site and had no ex parte contacts.
I also visited the site and had no ex parte contacts.
I've visited the site, had no ex parte contacts.
I've visited the site and had no ex parte contacts.
I've visited the site and also had no ex parte contacts.
Terrific. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing item on proposed density bonus update. Could we hear from staff, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Most of those who don't know me, Matt Summers is the attorney, and happy to give the density bonus ordinance staff report. Before you is a proposed update to the density bonus ordinance. This has, the first time this has come into the Planning Commission is tonight. It has been considered by the city council briefly previously, oh, a little earlier this year, I forget the exact date, May 22nd. They considered a term sheet and recommended that it move forward in this draft ordinance Just a brief overview, density bonus is a state law mandated program that allows qualifying affordable housing projects, and I'll define that term in a moment, to be built with a higher than approved, higher than otherwise allowed density, meaning a higher number of units per acre. The idea being that this is one of the more effective ways statewide to incentivize the building of affordable housing is to make it easier by allowing more units per acre, dividing the base land cost across more units reduces the price per unit of building them and thus makes the units more affordable. That affordability is also guaranteed as a density bonus project is required under this law, one of the updates, to deed restrict the units that are qualifying units to have that affordability levels at different percentages to be affordable, restricted affordability for 55 years. At different income levels depending on the units that were used to qualify for the ordinance. So it's a program that allows a developer to build more units than otherwise allowed on a plot of land in return for agreeing to maintain a certain percentage of those as an affordable unit, deed restricted for 55 years. Thus provides a powerful tool to secure affordable housing without having to directly subsidize it, as most of the other affordable housing that is, that is deed restricted guaranteed affordable housing that is built in this state is built through federal, state, or local subsidy money. And this is a way to have it built at the market. A basic project eligible for the density bonus must have a minimum percentage of units that are affordable for low, very low, or moderate income persons, and there's three new categories. That is transitional foster, youth, disabled veterans, and homeless persons. The city has an existing density bonus ordinance which is Section 10-2907. It was adopted some years ago, I believe in the early to mid 2000s. And what's before you now is a series of updates to it to reflect a series of bills that were passed in late 2016 in September. This is four bills, AB 2501, AB 2442, AB 2556, and AB 1934, which together rather substantially amended the density bonus statutes. They took effect January 1st of 17, and we are now perhaps a little bit behind some other cities, taking a look at an ordinance amending it. That gap, that delay reflects the fact that this city hasn't seen too many density bonus projects, and the council chose to focus on the excessive dwelling unit ordinance, which also was heavily amended in 16, and then again heavily amended in 17. And as you know, we have worked through a series of amendments on that ordinance about every six months or so. So going through what's proposed for change, the legislation is, the basic premise is the same. The various amendments further incentivize development of affordable housing by expanding that list of groups to add those three new categories, expanding the type of concessions that can be sought, including it to cover mixed use projects as well, and extending the affordability requirement from 30 years, which was, was in the city's ordinance and is the previous state requirement, to now 55-year affordability requirement. To go, not turn by turn, but a brief overview, taking a look at what's been proposed for change, and to follow along, Attachment A, page 2, which is the ordinance at issue. Subdivision A, the changes here are to set the minimum requirement as five units, again consistent with state law. Second, to add in the three new categories, 10% of the units reserved for transitional foster youth, or disabled veterans, or homeless persons, each of those as defined in federal and state law, to require that it be 55 years rather than the previous 30 years, and to clarify that it includes mixed use projects as a direct allowance. In mixed use projects captures both categories where you have an existing non-residential zone adding residential, and an existing residential zone adding commercial. Either of those can qualify if the, as proposed, if the necessary levels of affordable units are included. Turning to subdivision B, here the changes are relatively minor. It's adding mixed use, and it's adjusting the calculation method slightly to match the state law. Subdivision C, the changes adjust here to reflect when the city can make a denial of an incentive or a concession. So an incentive or concession is an additional allowance, or variance if you will, added to the state law that exists now but is being expanded, and it allows a developer of a density bonus project to get a change to a zoning code standard in addition to the base density. So as I noted, a density bonus project allows a developer to build more units than otherwise allowed in return for affordable housing. The state law also allows a developer to ask for one or more incentives or concessions, which are a reduction in the setback standard, or a reduction in parking standard, or an increase in height standard, to use three that are commonly seen as incentives or concessions. And the number of incentives or concessions is dictated by the number of units. The more units that are provided that are affordable, the more incentives or concessions that are granted. The minimum is one. The law is clear that the city can deny a request an incentive or concession, but only if the city can credibly make, or make the written finding based on substantial evidence that the incentive or concession would not result in identifiable or affordable cost reductions, or would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety, the physical environment, or historical resource, or would render the project in violation of another state or federal law. It's a rarely, it's a narrow category of situations in which the city can deny a request an incentive or concession. Here, the standard is adjusted slightly to reflect changes in state law. The additional changes in subdivision D are to further adjust the default parking ratio. Density bonus projects are allowed to take advantage of a dictated state parking ratio, distinct from our own parking ratios, and the newest state laws provide that if the unit, if the project is within half a mile of a major transit stop, as defined, then includes the maximum amounts of lower, very low income units, then there's no obligation to have any more parking than half a unit, half a space per unit, which is a lower level of parking required than the default level, which is itself lower than the city's own code. So we've added that provision in to reflect the state law. The percentages remain the same, and the other change subdivision D at the end is to add, again, that's 55 years rather than the existing 30 years. Subdivisions E through H are just changed to add mixed use in a couple of points. Subdivision I is worth spending a moment on. I, subsection I-2 on page 7, there is a discussion of inclusionary housing, and this is a reference back to a prior portion of the code that provided for inclusionary housing, meaning a minimum required number of affordable units in every residential project over five units. But that other section of the code that it cross-referenced, 10-2903, has been repealed. So here, the proposal is to delete that. The city retains the power to adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance, which would require a certain percentage of units of every residential project to be affordable, but that is a broader conversation and a policy choice the council would have to make. The commission could consider, if you wished, in the other item tonight, when you're looking at topics for the joint meeting with the council, to recommend taking a look at that. But what we propose in this ordinance is to delete the cross-reference to an inclusionary housing requirement that was later deleted from the code. And I apologize, I don't have the entire history of when that was deleted and why, but I know it is, has been deleted. Then, last, skipping forward, we've got just adding in mixed use through the prior sections. And then in the subdivision, rather, M, application process, the final change we've made is there's a new provision of state law that requires a notice of completeness or lack of completeness within 30 days. That's the default rule under the PermaStream Modding Act, but the state density bonus ordinance includes it in the ordinance, in their provision, so we've included it here as well. I'm available for any questions. I realize it's a fair amount of technical language, so I'm happy to discuss at length. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matthews. Any questions from the commissioners?
I have one.
Please, go ahead, Ray.
Thank you, Chair. It is technical, so forgive my ignorance of my, that my question might possibly fall into. In previous Planning Commission meetings, we've spoken about residential properties that have large acreage and overlays, zoning overlays, so they could build multiple structures on their properties, cluster housing, et cetera. Is that where this fits in when you say, because you said developer taking land, a homeowner isn't necessarily defined as, you know, a developer. So would someone up on Persimmon Hill with 10 acres be able to build multiple home, multiple dwellings there and have it considered a density bonus project?
They would have to be able, as I recall, Persimmon Hill is zoned residential, single family. If I, I'm looking to the planning staff to confirm that.
R04 or something like that.
Right.
R04.
Density bonus allowance allows more units than are otherwise allowed, but you need to have a base allowance, have to come in with a permitted five-unit project that meets the code.
Got it.
I don't think Persimmon Hill lots.
Well, I use that as an example, however, okay, so this is where our conversation about zoning and changing some of the zoning ordinances come in, because as we know, there isn't a lot of blank land within the city, you know, right in the city to build projects like this. But there is land further out in the larger residential parcels that could build multiple dwellings on their land if zoning was changed.
Right, and that would be, if the zoning of those areas was changed to a mixed, a residential multifamily zoning, then they would be eligible for these types of projects. That is, is obvious, would be a broader conversation. This is more applicable in the here and the now to, say, some of the larger vacant parcels along Ohio Avenue to the east that are zoned C1. You could imagine a density bonus project coming in and saying, we want to build 15 units of which will say a third of them are affordable, that's five units affordable, and we'd like to do a density bonus to get above the density, and we'd like our concession to be mixed use zoning. Imaginable.
Like the land on the corner by C-Fresh there, that we did a design review.
We did a concept.
A concept.
Exactly. That concept review project relies on this, though no one's deciding that project tonight, of course.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a few. So this, this applies to multifamily residential structures, and only to multifamily residential structures?
Well, it also would pick up mixed use structures.
Okay.
Mixed residential and commercial.
Okay, that certainly was one of the hurdles for the, the property that Commissioner Powers was discussing, that they wanted to put residences in a C1 zone.
Right, so this would allow that, because it allows mixed.
It would allow requesting that as, as a variance or an additional incentive.
As the incentive, yeah. Variance is the wrong term, variance is a different type of planning. I shouldn't use that term.
As an additional incentive, it's called, so-called.
Right, incentive or concession.
Okay. I'd like to start on page 2 of 10, Section 2A, Basic Provisions. This, let me see, line 4, it's talking about a residential or mixed use project which agrees to provide at least, and then it lists a number of things. Okay. Basic to this is a reference to Government Code Section 65915, which I printed out so that I could compare it with this. And 65915 says at least any one of the following, and then lists the same types of categories. If one leaves out at least one of, then it appears from the text to me that all of these are required. You have to provide at least 10% in this category, 5% in that category, 100% for qualifying residents, which is an age type of thing, and 10% here and 10% there.
So.
I'm, I'm wondering, am I misreading it the way it's written?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay.
We're happy to add at least one of, that's fine to clarify, but if you look about, on the next page, page 3, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9 lines down in the middle, there's an or. So that colon is a long list of things that ends with or, meaning any one of them is sufficient, because it's at least.
Thank you.
10, low, and so forth, and then it ends with an or. But I, there's no harm in adding at least one of the following as a clarification, because certainly others could make the same mistake.
Or one could put or after each one of the categories, either way.
That would be, that would be fine, but perhaps inconsistent with the rest of the code.
Rather repetitive, yes.
Exactly. I think it'd be a little better to just put it at the front.
Okay.
But certainly not an uncommon mistake.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to see that. I could use a better definition of a mixed use project. It says in paragraph A, third line from the bottom, "A mixed use project is a residential project." So first of all, it is in a, it is a project in a residential zone, I believe. And so I'm wondering how a mixed use project could be in a C1 zone.
That would be, could be clarified, the.
If we simply.
We can clarify it further. The allowance can be, and that one is, is a point of some debate amongst some cities. I had understood the council's term sheet direction to be to allow it to be both adding commercial to existing residential and adding residential to existing commercial, but certainly the Planning Commission could recommend only one, only adding, requiring base residential and adding commercial on top, and the definition could be clarified to reflect either.
I agree with allowing either one to be there. I'm thinking if, in that third line from the bottom of page, of paragraph A, if we just took out is a residential project and take out also, and then it would say a mixed use project is, just take out residential and take out also, then a mixed use project is a project that includes non-residential uses that are compatible with the residential project. Now, that's confusing again.
We'll take a look at it and how to revise it. The issue is that residential project is a defined term used throughout, so we've added residential or mixed use project. But I think the, the intent is clear, if that's the commission's ultimate vote, is to allow both, to have this defined to be both allowing commercial within residential and allowing residential within commercial. And to be clear, that's multifamily commercial, not single-family, single-family residential. So that, I think all those points could be clarified through a better definition.
Okay, and, and could a mixed use project be a project on PL-zoned land?
As I recall, at present, PL-zoned land doesn't permit multifamily housing. If, is that correct? So that would thus block it. A PL, a project on PL-zoned land would need a zone change.
Okay, it, it would make me feel better with this, because this is a proposed text change.
Correct.
Okay. It would make me feel better if we defined a mixed use project as a project in, as either a multifamily residential project or a commercial project that, that includes both residential and non-residential uses, or words to that effect.
Perhaps including a straight list of the zones that it must be in, which would be.
That would be fine, yeah.
Multifamily residential zones, VMU, C1.
But not PL.
Not PL, and not, not Ag or OS.
BP.
BP would be like C1, maybe, maybe not BP, and not the I zones, the institutional, the, well, MPD and M1, but there's also the institutional recreational zone, of which there's one large hotel that's the only thing that's on that.
Okay. Well, if we could get some clarification on that definition of mixed use, I'd feel a lot better about it.
Definitely.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, go ahead. When she said Kathy.
Oh, I, oh, no, no.
Sorry?
I just, I just had a brief follow-up on that, that, so there is a definition of mixed use in the definitions, and I just thought, unless there's some other concern about doing that, that it ought to be changed in the definitions section as well.
In 10-36, you mean?
Whatever part of the zoning code has the definitions.
Yeah, that's 10-36.
10-236?
Yes, agreed completely.
Yeah, okay. Please, go ahead.
Well, the question, the question that I had was, in our housing element, I'm, I'm just asking for clarification, I believe there was a special overlay on the Chaparral property, is that zone PL? And was that because it was a special overlay?
That is all PL, yeah.
It is zone PL, it is also, it's dual zoned. It's zone PL, it's also overlay zoned, special housing overlay.
Okay, that's, right.
And in that context, a house, special housing overlay project is eligible for the density bonus.
Right.
But not relying on PL zoning, instead it's relying on the housing overlay zoning.
Exactly. Okay, I just, for clarity.
Okay, so the housing overlay allows multifamily housing?
It requires multifamily housing.
Requires.
The special housing overlay zone requires multifamily housing at a minimum 20 units per acre, although there's an allowance for the council to reduce the zoning, reduce the number of units per acre if it finds it meets various other findings. But yes, the special housing overlay, Commissioner Nolan's correct, allows for residential in PL zones, but the key is that it's not in PL zones, it's in the housing overlay zone, of which some of the PL-zoned properties are under the housing overlay, but not all. There are other PL zones that are just PL zone.
Okay. On page 3, paragraph B, line, down at the fifth line, there's a parenthetical phrase, "including fractions resulting from construction of less than five dwellings." I don't understand the inclusion of that language, because paragraph A, lines 1 and 2, says you have to have five or more to be eligible for a density bonus.
I think that should be, that parenthesis, parenthetical should be deleted, reflecting the fact that we've set the minimum of units at five.
Sounds fine to me.
And here, the, the key point of this section is that when we're calculating the affordability requirements as a percentage of the number of units, as required, that that be rounded up, not down. So if.
And, and then when you add the density bonus units, you can't recalculate again, including them?
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it, to use an example, you're.
It would be a never-ending series.
Exactly.
Yeah.
To use an example, the project is proposed as 15 units, and they would like to, but they're only allowed to have 10 units, so they need a 50% density bonus to get, or that's too high. They're only allowed to have 12, and they need a one-third density bonus. They're allowed to get that if they have, as an example, 7% very low income. So 7% of 15 is not an even number, so you round up to, to the, to an integer.
Yeah, okay. Let me see, oh, paragraph, page 3, paragraph C, line 5, and several other places, including on page 4, still paragraph C, about the 12th line or so down, just a typo, but it calls out Section 500052.5 of the Health and Safety Code. There's an extra zero in there.
Oh.
And that, that just occurred, that occurs in several places.
Thank you for the catch.
I would ask that you, that you make that correction. Then, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 lines down from there, so I guess it's line 10 of paragraph C, it says, "The need for incentives will vary for different residential or mixed use projects." I wasn't sure exactly what that meant. The city will determine the need and then meet the need? Or is it the granting of incentives will vary from project to project?
That would be that the granting of incentives will vary from project to project.
I would think the need would be a subjective, to some extent, assertion by a project developer.
Agreed. I think the, admittedly, this is language that's in the existing.
Yeah, it's.
But worth looking. But worth looking at now that we're looking at it. Seems to me that that language should be rephrased.
If we just substitute granting for need, it makes sense to me, but there may be other issues here that I don't understand.
Yeah, I, I would support the granting of incentives, and we'll, we'll take a look and make sure we're not missing another nuance.
Okay, terrific. Uh, going on to page five, this is the, the long table. Um, my first question is, what, what is the, what is the meaning of column B under each of these paragraphs, or under each of these columns, very low, low, moderate? And it should be low, not low, not lower? Income as a column head? That's the, the state language, there's very low, low, moderate.
Yeah, the state, that should be correct. It's, it's low and very low, they keep, um, the state changes their terms a lot.
Well, that's why we're trying to keep up with that.
Exactly.
I don't understand what column B is for.
So A and B pick up, um, as noted at, at the footnote at the bottom of the table, A is the percentage of units that you get.
Okay.
The total on top of your existing allowance, and B is the number of additional incentives or concessions. The base number of incentives or concessions is one, and then you get one more as you hit, um, certain.
So this is, this is a result of that rounding up to the next whole number kind of thing?
No, it's, it's two different iss, it's, it's two different metrics. Column A is the, the number of units, of housing units that are allowed on top of the base zoning.
Okay.
Um, and column B is those incentives or concessions that I mentioned, how many of those you get. So you get, and, and I think we should perhaps clarify, because it's, it's not.
Then it, it requires defining the number, or the number and type of additional incentives that constitutes the universe of additional incentives. And then, I mean, you have to list them, and maybe there are seven, and you can get one, or two, or three of those?
So.
Or, I, I don't understand.
Incentive or concession is a defined term. That's defined in section, um, where was it? C.
It's in C.
Yeah, additional incentives, and there, the, the state term is incentives or concessions, and perhaps we should match that phrase.
Okay, yes, about 12, 14 lines down, it says, "The additional consent, incentives may include but are not limited to any of the following," and it lists three, four, five, six, six different things.
Right.
It's not limited to those.
It can be anything else. It's, it's any change in a standard in our code that makes the project more expensive, is the base definition of an incentive or a concession. It's a change in the code that allows it to be a cheaper project.
Okay.
That thus, cheaper meaning that the unit, the provision of the affordable units is cheaper.
Sure, reduce the cost, it'll presumably reduce the price.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Um, on the table, in the second row below the column heads, in moderate income, column A, it says 20% dash 5%. I think it should be 20% dash 40%.
That.
I'm sorry, um, no, 20 to 24, because then you've got 25 through 40 in successive rows of the table. So I think five should read 24.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay.
And admittedly, this table.
And then over in the, in the density bonus area, it says 15 dash 1 dash percent. I think the second dash should be a nine, should read 15 to 19%.
Yes, agreed.
Okay. And, uh, this is not a, a criticism of anyone who worked on this change, those were errors in the original table.
Documents like this, they're improved through many hands over time. They never reach perfection.
Absolutely. I've, I've done 300-page briefings myself and come back a year later and find errors, so. Um, on page seven, paragraph I, one, uh, as you noted, the inclusionary housing paragraph was deleted, or is proposed to be deleted. If it is, then line one of the basic incentive, the first phrase, I think should also be deleted, and it should simply say, "All affordable units shall remain restricted," because with 10-2907I2 deleted, there is no reference there.
Uh, correct, we'll check that, although I had thought that 10-2907I2, yeah, I see what you're saying. Agreed. It would just be all affordable units, remain restricted for 55 years.
At the bottom of page seven, paragraph K, and this is, again, this is original text. "A developer pursuant to this section may submit its proposal for conceptual review by the city council." This, again, is original text. Would this not come before the planning commission? Would a concept review go directly to city council?
Hmm.
It apparently is the intent of the paragraph as it's written, but it seems odd to me.
I think this one could either be changed to be PC or council, or the fact that it's a "may submit," it could be left as is. Um, admittedly, we haven't seen.
Okay, so it allows the developer to choose to bypass the planning commission?
And also allow.
I'm not criticizing that, I just want to.
Yeah, I think that's the intent, is it lets, of course, it has to come through the planning commission when it's time to apply, but I think part of this is getting us, it lets the developer get an early sense from the council of, is there support or not for spending?
Design review permit would still come through planning commission?
Very much so.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and part of that reflects the fact that in many of these projects, developers find it advantageous to find out early, is there support or not from the council? Because if there isn't support, it doesn't make sense to spend, I've seen projects costing a million dollars in design studies, to get through. Denial is rather expensive.
Okay, so that, that could be a good thing for a developer?
And it's a good thing for the community, because while the community may not be focused on developers' housing costs, they are focused on the massive amount of council time, commission time, community time, staff time, and, um, community energy that could be spent on a project that has no support, versus that does have support.
And the public is going to pay a lot more attention to city council meetings than to planning commission meetings anyway.
Right, there's a public notification element, because as we know, more people attend the other, one versus the other.
Okay. Um, just one other question here. Um, I noted that this, this ordinance skips from section two to section six, is that a problem?
That would just be a typo.
So, and, well, I mean, normally, there are other things, environmental determination, severability, certification, effective date, those are, those are boilerplate for any, for any ordinance, I believe, but I don't know what normally goes in sections three, four, and five, or if we ought to simply renumber the others.
I think here it should just be renumbered.
And you and I have discussed separately the reference to 10-2704, and I will communicate with the city manager about that to get your opinion.
Yes.
That's all my questions.
I just have one small.
Yes, ma'am.
Comment. Um, page seven, uh, subsection J, development standards.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's some wording that, it's in the existing code, but it just doesn't quite read right, and it's, so it's the second sentence, it says this.
Page seven.
Oh, page seven?
Page seven. Paragraph J, development standards?
Uh, second sentence. Um, so it reads, "The square footage of affordable units and interior features in affordable units may not be the same as," and I think it should, or it says, "or equivalent to," so I think it's saying it doesn't have to be the same, um, as the non-restricted units, but I thought maybe some wording, uh, something else that would, you're not, you're not forbidding it, in other words. It could be the same, but it could be, it could be equivalent or non-equivalent, is what I'm saying, so.
Right, I, perhaps it could be rephrased as, "The square footage of affordable units and interior features in affordable units is not required to be the same as or, or equivalent to those in non-restricted units in the same residential project."
Yeah.
So long as they are of good quality and consistent with contemporary standards.
Yeah.
So the non-restricted units could be fancier inside, is what it amounts to.
But the goal, exactly, they could be much nicer, but the restricted units, the affordable units, would still need to meet minimum standards. The goal here is to avoid, as one developer did in a project in a city in Los Angeles County, they had a whole separate entrance for the affordable units around back off of the alley, and the council said, "No." I'll let you Google which.
That's really rude.
Yeah, it was, as you can imagine, the council was very livid, so the intent, and that's the intent, the intent is to be, developers are getting a massive benefit from a density bonus project. They're getting a higher number of units than they otherwise would be allowed.
Right.
Saving the trouble of doing a zone change, which can be often politically impossible. In return for that benefit, there's this public benefit of restricted affordability units, and you should, developers shouldn't be able to get that, that benefit without providing real housing, as opposed to legalized slums.
Or quasi-substandard, or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other questions from the, from the commission? Uh, I would ask your, your advice on this at this point, Mr. Summers. Uh, should we simply summarize the changes that, that we've talked about here and, and otherwise vote on the ordinance, or would you recommend coming back with a subsequent red-line version?
We're happy to do either. I think the changes are fairly straightforward, and we've discussed them fairly well. I think it would, if the commission's comfortable, I can summarize the changes that we'd make, and then you can move it forward to the council.
Okay. Well, let's, let's hear, unless there are other questions.
And I would, I'm guessing we didn't receive any public comment cards. It is a public hearing, so we should open the hearing, take comment, and then close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we've asked questions of staff.
We had commissioner questions, and now we would need that.
Excuse me. You're, you're completely right, my fault. Um, if there are no other questions of staff, then we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? I have no speaker cards, but I would invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to come forward. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, Mr. Summers, if you would, please provide us with a summary of the changes that we've discussed.
Certainly. So, going through, um, subdivision A, we add in that, before the list of types of projects, provide at least one of the following, and then list the different affordability levels.
Great.
Um, add a new definition, or a refined definition for mixed-use project, stating cleanly that mixed-use projects would be, um, either adding commercial to existing multifamily residential zoned, or adding multifamily residential to existing commercial zoned, in all cases, limiting it to specified zones, um, not including PL, but including the affordable housing overlay zone. And, and the, not including PL in the single-family residential zones, but including, um, the SPL overlay, which is the special housing overlay zone. In subdivision B, delete the parenthetical referencing fractions from less than five units. In subdivision C, adjust the initial phrase, additional incentives to be the state new term, incentives or concessions, and provide, correct the reference to Health and Safety Code section 50,052.5, provide that it would be the granting of incentives, which will vary case by case, not the need for the incentives. In the table, uh, adjust for call the moderate income column, that it's 20 to 24%, which secures, uh, two incentives, and then 15 to 19% on the far left would be the density bonus factor for, um, that level. And in the footnote below the table, the footnote for B, clarify that that's the same number of additional incentives, replace it with incentives or concessions.
Refer back to paragraph C?
Yeah, as defined by, um, subsection C, or add that cross-reference back.
Okay.
Because it's a little bit hanging out by itself.
Yeah.
In, turning now to subdivision I, delete under basic incentives the cross-reference to the removed 10, uh, subdivision I2.
Right.
So it would begin, "All affordable units shall remain restricted for 55 years." In J, correct the references we mentioned to the interior features to be, they are not required to be the same, but they must be of good quality and consistent with contemporary standards for housing. Conceptual review, add planning commission or council, I think is, is reasonable, and, um, correct the numbering for sections six through nine, and that's the changes I had.
And change the definition.
And, thank you, and correct, um, the corresponding definition.
Of mixed-use.
Of mixed-use.
That's in 10-236?
Yes.
Yeah.
In 10-23602, subsection M.
Terrific. Any other questions from the commissioners? Then we, I will entertain a motion to approve this ordinance as amended.
Thank you for your due diligence.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, the changes, and that we, um, recommend that city council adopt the ordinance per the changes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Merk?
Yes.
Harbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Bosie?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Lattes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on to item three, a discussion item, conceptual review, CR18-02, for a commercial project in a VMU zone at 204 and 206 Kenyatta Street, to construct a 25 and 145-square-foot two-story mixed-use addition to an existing one-story, 1,760-square-foot, one-story commercial building with a detached 544-square-foot garage and three uncovered parking spaces. Could we hear from staff, please?
I'd like to do just a, a brief introduction. Um, some of you may have come to our front counter and met, uh, our new full-time associate planner here with the city, but for those of you who haven't, Suzanne Regal is, uh, sitting to my right, and she will be, uh, introducing this concept review.
Welcome to the family.
I just wanted to say, we're, we're thrilled to have her and give you a little bit of, of the background on her. She, um, had, has several years of experience with the city of Santa Barbara, and then most recently, uh, was working in, in, she and I will say this different, I say this the California way, but Norfolk, Virginia? And she'll correct me on how that's said.
Norfolk.
Yeah, exactly. And so, uh, so she was there recently, and, and, um, you know, the associate planner position, the full-time position, has been a position that we've been trying to fill for quite a while here at the city, so we're thrilled to have her, and, um, and she's been, uh, you know, jumping right in. So with that, I will turn the concept review over to Suzanne.
A lot of federal land in Norfolk.
Yes, there is. Uh, just as an aside, I am also a certified floodplain manager, because I was in Norfolk, and you have tidal surge and floodplains. I became a manager back there.
Very good.
Um, the project that I have before you today is a conceptual review for, um, 204 and 206 Kenyatta. The applications that they have that will eventually need to be requested are a lotline adjustment or a voluntary lot merger to merge the two lots, and then they're proposing to do, um, the large addition to the existing RTK studio building on 206 Kenyatta. Uh, they are also proposing to remove the existing curb cut and driveway for 204 Kenyatta and relocate it to the opposite side of the building. They will, um, need further details before they can come back for a design review permit.
Sure.
Uh, there was insufficient information to do a true project analysis, because this is a concept review level project, we, um, do not do environmental review at this level, so when they submit for an application for those discretionary applications, they would require to go through environmental review. would require to go through environmental review. I think I covered everything in my notes. Richard Keat and Mary Kennedy are here, if you have any further questions about the project details. But there are some questions on the site layout, if you had seen on page five of the staff report, which talk about driveway and site access, that we would like to get some direction from the commission.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission? I have a couple. Starting with, and since we don't have an ordinance or anything here, so my questions apply to the staff report. On page two, the bottom paragraph, it says, "The basic allowable floor area ratio," ration, ratio should be, "shall be determined through design review." I think the basic floor area ratio, but not the allowable floor ratio, would be established in a design review. The allowable would be already set before the design review, wouldn't it?
In the basic standards, in the VMU section of the ordinance, it does say that you are allowed up to 50 percent, and if you are over 50 percent, that is determined by the planning commission during the design review permit process.
Okay, okay.
But they're well below that.
Do you have an idea of what the floor area ratio is, as shown in the drawings, that are, that are a part of our packet here?
I would have to do some quick math for you.
Oh, okay, well, then, I wouldn't worry about it. I, I had a little trouble with the drawings, in that it wasn't clear to me, it, it appears that the, that the existing structure at 204 is to be taken down.
That is my understanding.
And a new building put in its place with additional building attached to that, that kind of spans the two existing buildings. Is that right?
Correct. If you look at the first site plan, it shows the existing condition.
Right.
Where there is two one-story buildings, and a property lying down the center of those two buildings.
Right.
On the second site plan is the proposed site plan, so that is what requires the voluntary lot merger, so they can have a building, the two buildings connected, but it is demolishing the existing building at 204, and proposing that large addition. That is in the teal or color.
Okay, I, I also, I note that this is on the third page, proposed structure. It shows total proposed 2,861 square feet, and the subject is constructing a 2,545 square-foot, two-story mixed-use addition. Are both of these structures that are shown in the green or gray or whatever on the third page, are those, are those both two-story?
No.
It looks like the intermediate structure there is, oh, single-story, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're proposing a 2,545 square-foot, two-story, which is shown at the southernmost edge, and then an additional single-story structure in between those two.
Correct. And what I would like to also point out is the discrepancy in the square footages, because there is a storage mezzanine in there, which does not count as square footage for a building permit.
Well, I just figured the difference was because of that single-story.
No, it has to do with the storage mezzanine within the volume of the building.
It talks about parking. Commercial is one per thousand square feet, so that's four spaces, and then one more for business owners loft residence is five. Do we not have five now? I can't tell. I can see that on the 204 property, it looks like there's three parking spaces at the back of the property, at the east edge of the property. I can't tell what parking spaces there are on the 206 property.
I believe there to be two approved parking spaces within that garage structure.
Okay. The, it's not clear, it shows an existing garage, but it's, it's not obvious how many parking spaces are there. And does, does parking in a driveway count for anything?
No.
Top of page five of six, it says, "The applicant must request approval by the city engineer for the driveway curb cut to be closer than 100 feet to the intersection." I thought I read 10-1409B, and that said 150 feet.
There are two provisions, and because of the width of the frontage of this particular lot, it's 100 feet.
How, how would you do a driveway curb cut on a corner lot that's 50 by 150? You have to put it on the long part of the lot and set it 100 feet back from the intersection?
They would get that city engineer exception approved by the, to allow it to be closer.
I mean, it sounds to me like if it's a 50 by 150 lot, and say you're next to the corner on Drown or Fulton or one of those places, that there is, there is nowhere you can put a driveway curb cut.
Without the exception.
Without a variation.
Correct.
And that seems nonsensical to me.
I think it's more of a traffic safety issue, if you're trying to make sure that the site access is not going to further complicate or create accidents at the corner. So you want it to move away from the intersection.
And is that, is that a general citywide rule, or is it different for the VMU? This is in the VMU.
This is a citywide rule.
Citywide rule, okay. And then it says, "A separation of two or more," I guess it means unconnected driveways, "by less than 50 feet that serve the same or adjacent multifamily or non-residential development." As I look at the picture here, of course, I don't know, 50-foot, 50-foot, okay. If one driveway is at the north edge of the property, and the other one proposed at the south edge of the property, it appears to me that they're more than 50 feet apart.
It has to do with the property at 204, that is the subject of this application, and the existing corner parcel that's at 202 Kenyatta. Those driveways are abutting each other in the proposal. Because they're putting the new proposed driveway at that southerly property length, there is an adjacent curb cut on the neighboring property.
So my ability to put a driveway curb cut in depends on where my neighbor puts a driveway curb cut?
Unless you get the city engineer to approve it.
Okay, okay. The following paragraph says, "Furthermore, the applicant has been advised, the driveway as shown does not meet the minimum width for use as a two-way driveway." Is there a citywide requirement for two-way driveways?
Correct. So if you're going in and out the same curb cut, you're supposed to have a minimum driveway width of 24 feet for a commercial property.
And this is a VMU mixed-use property?
Correct.
And so it has all the restrictions of a residential property, and all the restrictions of a commercial property?
This is driveway and site access. So they can do a two-way driveway, or they can do a one-way driveway that loops around and comes out a second driveway, which is one of the suggestions staff has had to them.
Okay, could, could you tell me where in the code that is?
It is in that same section, 10-2, 1,400, in that.
And somewhere in the, in the parking provisions of the code?
So the, the ordinance has different provisions for single-family use, for multifamily use, and for non-residential driveways. And this provision is a provision for non-residential uses, that requires the 24-foot two-way driveway width, or a 12-foot one-way driveway that would circulate through the property and come out a different driveway.
So, because a part of this property is commercial, the commercial requirements for a driveway apply to the entire property?
Correct.
Not the residential requirements?
Correct.
Okay, could you point me to that in the code? I, I don't.
1409D3.
Says, "Parallel parking spaces shall have a minimum width of nine feet, a minimum length of 24 feet. Isle widths shall be 12 feet for one-way traffic, and 24 for two-way traffic." But is there somewhere that it says that's what's required for commercial property?
If I could jump in briefly?
Yes, sir.
10-1409D3 reads in full, "Driveways for non-residential uses shall have a minimum paved width of 12 feet for one-way driveways, and 24 feet for two-way driveways, with the max, the maximum driveway width shall be 30 feet, exclusive of the area provided for median divider." So it's, that's 10-1409 subsection.
1409D3, I apologize.
Yeah, D3.
I was looking at the wrong citation.
And, and the key is that, as, as is noted by Ms. Regal, single-family residences are not subject to that standard. There's a different standard for them.
Yes, it says non-residential uses.
Right. Here, the project, the VMU project proposes a mixed-use, which means non-residential uses, so they're looking at this driveway standard. If the commission is concerned about the application, that standard is defeating the point of the VMU mixed-use zone, then they should suggest to the applicant looking at some other alternatives, which could include perhaps a variance request.
Okay. And I apologize, I was looking at 1408D3.
Ah, no, no worries, it's, it's a complicated set of sections.
Okay. The proposed project is required to provide a total of five spaces. This says, "The applicant is proposing parking for five, including two covered, and three, presumably uncovered spaces." So I guess the two covered spaces are in the garage in the northern piece of the property.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then at the bottom of page five of six, underwater and sewer, it says, "The applicant would be required to provide can and will serve letters from Ojai Sanitary and Casitas Municipal Water District." I think the city council some time ago removed the requirement for can and will serve letters from the sanitary district. That's a particular point of annoyance with the sanitary district, but I think that's the case.
As staff understands the council's prior direction, that was limited to excessive dwelling units, and didn't extend to new commercial development.
Okay.
Or new mixed-use development.
Okay, so, so we have, we have two parcels here that are becoming a single parcel. We have two buildings that are becoming a single building. Does this require two laterals, and therefore a second can and will serve letter? I mean, I presume there's already a can and will serve letter from the sanitary district on file for the.
There should already be two laterals, because it's two separate parcels.
Well, there should, it's two, two residential buildings, but I don't, I don't understand this requirement. I think either it's been met, or it's not real.
Because of the age of the structure, I don't know if the existing laterals meet the current requirements for the size of the building. That is something that those other utilities will have to decide, if those meet current capacity, or if they're going to have to do anything to upgrade their existing utilities.
Okay.
And they may require them to get rid of a meter or two, I'm not sure.
Okay. And this is clearly not an ADU, so I see why it wouldn't apply. That's all my questions of staff. Anything else from the commission? Very good. Then we'll go to the, I, I guess it's not officially a public hearing, but I would invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this, the, yeah, like the applicant, to come forward and speak about this project. Please come forward, give us your name and address. I presume it's 206, but who knows?
Together, okay?
Sure.
Okay. I'm Richard Keat, and this is Mary Kennedy, and we live at 307 South Montgomery in Ojai.
Okay.
Yeah. And, well, the first thing I'd like to just mention is that, for, for what it's worth, and I know the technicalities, this may be a moot point, but we, we actually did a traffic, had, had a traffic study done for our business years ago for the property we had on Ojai Avenue, down there by, it's 1010 Ojai Avenue, it's almost a two-acre site that we were going to move our business to. But at that time, we were allowed 84 trips a day, and we, we did a traffic study that came back with five trips a day theoretically, based on, you know, observing our existing business. The truth is that, on average, we have about three clients come to our studio per week. And so, we really don't need all that parking, but we're happy to provide it. But the idea of having to provide all that parking in the back, which will never get used by, you know, by our clients, or even by us, would, if, if it's going to require to have to have cars be able to circulate all the way around, you know, in lieu of, obviously, to have a two-way traffic.
And it wipes out that garage at 206.
Yeah, and it basically would take over more than half of the lot that we bought, you know, the, the place next door, it would make no sense to even go forward with the project if we had to have two-way traffic, you know. We don't intend it to become, you know, it's not going to become like a Sizzler someday or something like that, it's more likely to turn back into a home, which is, we're, we're designing it so that it could just as well function well as a home. We might even, one day, want to retire to, you know, live and work on the property, you know. So those are, are, you know, personal issues in terms of, you know, what we're doing and designing and so forth. So, you know, and then also, again, this isn't a complaint, but just an observation, we, of course, are next door to the ARC Center.
We're open to complaints.
Okay. It's, it's actually not a complaint, but it's just an observation, because we're finding things with the way things are already, you know, with this situation, but there's about maybe 16 cars a day that park up and down, all, all of Kenyatta Street in our block is parked up on both sides every day, by people that work at the ARC Center, people that work at Bart's Books, and then, you know, Bart's Books probably generates 30 or 40 trips a day to Bart's Books, and, and, you know, the, the commercial portion of the building on the corner there also has a number of cars coming and going, and.
That's the hospice?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, and that sort of thing. There's also a couple of families, there's one family across the street that has like five or six cars, so, and, and, and no, you know, no park, no parking driveway on Kenyatta Street, you know, they just park in front of their house. And again, I'm not complaining about any, any of those people, or, I mean, they've got to park their car somewhere. It would be nice if ARC actually used their parking lot, by the way, for some of their workers, you know, rather than just parking up the whole street, so.
As often as not, I see their gate locked. I'm not really sure why.
Yeah, it's, I, I know the reason from being next door all these years, is because it's a long walk around to go in to park in their parking lot, but I don't know why they don't have a.
Oh.
They don't have a gate that opens into the school grounds, because they're afraid of, you know, some of the clients, you know, getting out without them noticing them, that sort of thing, you know. So, anyway, but I'm just kind of making a case for the, our impact is extremely low, you know, in terms of like trips and things like that, so we would, you know, we would hope that we wouldn't have to, you know, give up too much space for parking on our, on our property, because we just don't have the need for it. I don't know if you have to think about what it might be used for someday in the future, and I would understand if you do, but we would hope to keep that to a minimum, and maybe not have to carve a path through the back, so people can go in and park, and then go around the other way to get out, because it's not too likely we're going to have traffic jams with, somebody can't get out because somebody else is coming in at the same time, that's just not going to happen. So, anyway, just a thought about that, so.
Okay, please, would you wish to speak, ma'am?
My name's Mary Kennedy, and our home is at 307 South Montgomery. We own the business at 206 Kenyatta Street since 1995, and we recently purchased the next-door house, 204 Kenyatta. I would like to ask for a variance, well, we'll come to that, I guess, but regarding what you. what you were talking about, Chair, of the driveway, the curb cut, if one property can do it now, we are not allowed to do it, since they're right next to each other? You know, they got their, I don't know, they got their first, but it is essential to what we need to do. I wanted to make like a, to load boxes, like a loading, a small loading dock, to load up cars with their products and then have them leave, which is about, it shows on the plans, but I think it might be from the street back, I don't know, less than twenty feet, I'm not quite sure. And then, the other thing they said was, there's a large-
Loading dock is along the south side of the property there?
Yep, right against the south, the new driveway that has moved to the southern, the southern property line.
So you'd be pulling partway in that driveway, loading a vehicle, and then backing out to the street?
Yep.
Okay.
Or backing in and pulling straight out, you know.
Right, right now, I often have to carry boxes of tile out to somebody that's parked halfway down the street, because, you know, because that's where they, they parked when they got there, they didn't, you know, they didn't think to, they couldn't get any closer, or they, you know, we had a car in our driveway already, our car in our driveway, so, you know, that kind of thing, so it's, you know, it's just something that would be nice to have, so I don't always have to carry these boxes halfway down the street, so.
Okay.
And then the other thing, it's on the comments, was a large tree out front that is not protected, that we would like to have it removed. We cannot get in, we have one year to take the branches off that are hanging over the house, or the insurance won't cover the house, but if we take the branches off, it'll slowly kill the tree, so I think it might be good to take care of it all at once. So, that's it.
Okay, please, please stay at the, at the, at the podium, if you would. Does anyone on the commission have questions for the applicant?
I do, Chair.
Great, go ahead.
I love the design, I love your product. I guess I'm, I'm going to stay on the same train I'm always on and encourage any type of water conservation, design elements, rainwater harvesting, instead of hardscape, maybe think about permeable pavers, that, that whole perspective and, and mind thought, which I don't see in the concept necessarily, but we haven't come that far yet.
We did propose, I don't know if I wrote on there, but DG across all the back, and then just a handful of trees, and the whole property needs to be regraded, it, it slopes to the center where it pools, so it needs to, but yeah, definitely.
Mm-hmm. So you could make a little swale there or something to capture the water. I was, I was a little sad that that beautiful cypr- is it a cypress, or it's a pine, or-
Cedar.
It's a cedar, that was it, that that needs to go. One, I love those trees, and it's an old tree. And it'll be missed on that block.
We'll fill in with something nice.
That's all.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of questions or comments. Did I understand you to say that in the back of the lot, meaning that would be, I guess, on the east side, you're planning to put decomposed granite? So, I, this, I'm just going to make a suggestion, possibly. You could still meet your circular driveway, one-way circular driveway with a twelve-foot minimum, if you're going to, and I'm not just going to hold this up, if you're going to put decomposed granite back here, if you actually do stabilize decomposed granite to, you know, a certain standard, it will suffice and function as the driveway. So, if you're going to be doing the DG anyway, you could kind of kill, you know-
That's, our, our whole property where we live is all done in DG, parking lot-
But are you doing any other landscape at all, or is it just all DG?
There'll be some trees in there, I would like some fruit trees, but three, four trees. We are there to make tile, and keeping up on the landscape has got to be-
Right, so you'll end up following our landscape standards, but I just wanted to point that out, since you did say you're doing the DG, if you stabilize it correctly, you will now have met your driveway requirement.
I'd like to do the DG.
So I think, I would like to make that recommendation. And then I know that this cedar is not protected, unfortunately, though this is my opinion, unfortunately, our tree ordinance was changed, I guess it's been about a year and a half ago, a lot of trees that at one time were protected are no longer, but I would encourage you to definitely add some trees, even though I know you have every right to take that out.
Was the landscape plan not included? Is it included?
Um-
It is there. There, there are areas on the drawing that are called landscape.
Yeah, it was-
No, there's the landscape.
Oh, maybe I had that in there, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it.
Other way.
Attachment B, page 205.
There it is, right here. Okay, so, um-
Back of something?
Yeah, but essentially, yeah, that whole driveway, it's almost like a no-brainer, since you're already doing the DG. Keep going.
Maybe I should mention something else, too, that has to do with landscaping, is that we're planning, we, we moved a tree twenty-seven years ago from Los Arboles that was red-tagged to be taken down, an old olive tree that had grown under the canopy of taller trees, and it was half-dead and so forth, and we, we dug it out and moved it over to our studio where it is now, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a very interesting, you know, gnarled and twisted tree, but it is getting pretty close to, 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 you know, giving up, so to speak.
End of life, yes.
Yeah, and so we're thinking that we need to remove it. It was half-dead when we moved it there twenty-seven years ago, and we somehow miraculously brought it back to life, but it's in heavy decline now, so that's something we want to take away. There's a tree that's bigger than that, that we planted when we first got there, that's going crazy, but we, we're, we're very big on trees. We, where we live, literally, we had no trees on the property when we bought it, and now there's like, you know, fifteen trees there or something like that, so we're very tree-friendly, I guess you could say. We love trees, so.
Other was, I wanted to say, you know, I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
I, I have to say, I like the project as well, I like your design, it's, I keep thinking hobbit house, but I, my reference may be wrong there, but it's a very unique design for Ojai, I think, and, and quite charming. Kathy mentioned putting the circle drive in, circle drive of a sort, would mean not planting the valley oak.
Or moving.
Well, it's not there at the moment.
Yes, not there, but if they just adjusted the location, they could still do the drive.
Yeah.
Right?
You could slide it back or whatever. That would be a good idea. Other than that, I'm, I'm glad to see the business in town, I hope it prospers in town, and I very much like continuing that same style. What'd you call it, rolled roof?
Yeah.
Rolled roof.
It's in a couple of other buildings in town that inspired it.
I, okay.
One on Ojai Avenue, actually. It's, it's just a nice touch, rather than just a flat face.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Another question, Chair. Just about the construction, it's just my own curiosity, are, is, the current home is, is our business is stone, and then you're going to match that. Is that a solid stone building, or is it a stone facade, or what?
It's a stone facade, but it's literally three feet from the existing building at the base, and it, you know, gets up to about a foot thick at the top, and it's kind of crazy, but the, that, that walkway that comes up is literally four feet of concrete at the top, solid concrete, because the guy that, the guy that did it, well, we wanted it to be, the house was, like, you could literally take the front door, open it up, and shake it back and forth, and the whole front of the place went back and forth like this, about six inches, so one of the ways that, you know, we put a couple hundred thousand dollars into it twenty-seven years ago, to bring it all up to commercial code, you know, including, you know, doubling up all the floor rafters, which is a tricky bit of work when it's an existing building, and piers underneath and so forth and so on, so it's very rugged building now, but we wanted, the rockwork is decorative, but it's also meant to fortify the building and insulate the building and so forth, so, you know, and it was, you know, an aesthetic decision that also had practicality to it, so.
Kathy, you were next, I think.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that I love what you're doing, I think it's, it's an industry, the type of industry that's, you know, wonderful for Ojai to have, and I really appreciate the fact that you're taking this really unique house and creating an addition that's, that carries forth the whole design aesthetic, and I really, really love that, I think it's fantastic. And the, my only comment, it's just a, it's just a suggestion or a question, so you have olive trees in the front, and I see that, that the recommended streetscape is for oak trees, is there any, why are you going with olive trees, or rather than maybe live oak or something?
Kind of match the other side, we could change it to an oak if it was necessary. Right now, we're not happy with the olive, because it's really messy at certain times of the year, so we might easily change to an oak.
It's a very poor tree.
I would just, I would just ask that maybe you think that, think, think, or just look into it, and if you could follow the, the streetscape guidelines here, I think that would be a good, a good thing.
Thank you.
And, let's see. I, I, I thought maybe there would be, yeah, if you, if you could do the DG granite or something more permeable, maybe there would be a way to look at that in terms of giving some relief on the driveway width or something, because you're adding permeability, you know, it's just a thought, I haven't really, really haven't thought that through, but just, just an idea off the top of my head.
The fewer variances that you request, the easier I suspect it will be to get through city council. And they have to approve, I think, the lot line adjustment anyway, right?
No.
No?
The lot line adjustment goes before planning commission because it is increasing a lot size over ten percent. In, under the subdivision map back, voluntary mergers are usually a ministerial action.
Okay, fine. Bobby, you had some questions?
I just wanted to say that sometime ago, it was pointed out to me that, that house next to your building was perhaps one of the case-study buildings, you're familiar with those? And, but it is in such disrepair that it's, and it's been compromised so much by the two-story piece that's next to it, that I would say-
I haven't seen any correlation from the interior and the materials used that represent that what they're thinking was with the case-study.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I've just seen the outside of it, I mean, obviously, it was a house that, until somebody mentioned that to me, I had driven by and never even paid any attention to, because it's so derelict. But I think your project will be quite nice, and the little stone building is so quirky and interesting, and I, I, you know, I think it'll be a great project.
Thanks. Maybe I can mention one more thing that might come, come to your attention, or you might think about it afterwards, is that we're, we're not doing this to really expand our business, our, our business was, we had all this overflow stuff over at the other property that we bought to move to, and we never did do that, so all that's come back, it's come, you know, we sold that property, it's all back in our hands again.
We had outgrown our 206 studio sixteen years ago.
Yeah, and that's why we bought the property on, on Ojai Avenue, and I'm not complaining about that whole debacle, that just, you know, the zoning issues were changed after we, after we got a unanimous approval under concept review, three months later, an accidental change in the zone forbid specifically tile-making in the zone, or tile art, or ceramics, or pottery, all of the things were included, and then forbidden, 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 so, you know, and it was going to get fixed and it didn't, and I'm, there's no bitterness there, it's just that's what happened. So, this is so that, instead of people coming into the studio and having to walk through where we glazed tiles and where we, you know, are, are doing all of our craft, you know, which they like to see anyway, but sometimes it's not convenient for them to have to walk through there to go back and see the finished work that's available and so forth, and right now, there's kind of showroom space in the beginning, in the, in the front and in the back, and in between, they walk through, you know, places where we're doing our work, and, and then we've got stuff everywhere we don't know what to do with, so this expansion is just going to make life a lot easier for us to, and, and to be able to show our work, because we, we, we have very tiny little showroom areas right now, where people have to kind of like, you know, like, we can't really show very much of our, of our grander pieces, there's just no place to, no place to display them and so forth, so that's what, this is mainly all about, is so that we have better flow-through to go get tiles for people, to show them and so forth. So it's, you know, it's, it's not an expansion like, oh, you know, now the business is getting bigger, it's just getting more sane, we hope, so.
I, I have been told, but have not had it confirmed, that it is your work that is in those things that look like windows on the street side of the oaks?
Yes.
That's all your tile work?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, very nice. In, in this color rendering here, I might be led to think that that little cross-building there is going to be the new entrance to your, to your business, is that right?
Um, we're going to stick with the existing, existing entrance at 206, because there's a handicap ramp. Yeah, right there.
It's over here, okay.
And those doors are just, I don't know.
Because you need doors, yeah.
Yeah, we got these beautiful five-hundred-pound bronze doors in trade for tile years ago, and we just want to show them off, they're beautiful. But they're going to remain locked, and-
Yeah.
It's kind of like Mary described, is that, that section in the middle is kind of like our art piece, where it's kind of like a, like a, like a, an oversized jewelry box of tile work is kind of the concept that we have there, so it's just-
That's going to be showroom, you mean?
Well, yeah, once you step inside, but there's a little bit of an outdoor area that's just kind of showing off, you know, a little more tile work in, 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 you know, in the same kind of quiet tones that we have already on the existing studio, we didn't, we didn't want to overpower the rockwork with, you know, with tile, because we, you know, so we used earthy colors and so forth, and, and did it that way, so.
Just one last question, again, just personal curiosity, where, where is another structure in this city with a rolled roof like that?
Well, one of them is on Ojai Avenue, and it's on the south side of Ojai Avenue, heading out of town, near that, that chiropractic building with the, with the kind of the ramp going up to, it's one of those buildings right in that area.
How far out of town?
Oh, no, it's, it, it's just maybe like a-
Before you get to Soul Park?
No, no, it's, I'm sorry, it's going towards Vons from, let's say, Bart's Books, you know, or, or, you know, from the, from the Jim and Rob Shopping Center, if you're going towards Vons on the left side, maybe like a football field length down the street, you'll see a, a building on, on, on Ojai Avenue with that rolled roof.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for the applicants?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please, go ahead.
It's good to see you guys.
You too. We're not meeting at, 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 at the grocery store.
I remember when your original building was done, it was quite controversial, and I'm really glad to see that the commission is now saying, "This is wonderful, we want more of this," so.
Well, thank you. It did make it to the cover of the windshield survey at one point, it was like the only picture on the cover, and then it, it became one of many pictures, so that was gratifying, I have to admit.
I really like what you're doing, I think it'll be wonderful.
Well, thank you both. She's a very good artist, and I'm a good, good craftsman, so it's a good combination.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments for the applicants? Okay, do you feel like you've, you've gotten a sense of what the planning commission is thinking here?
Very much so.
And some suggestions as to, let's say, minimize the number of variances that you might have to request for the property? Because those, like all decisions here, are not final, they're all appealable to the city council, and in many cases, we are only making recommendations to the city council, our decisions aren't final pending appeal, so.
Probably the most important one is just that apron issue, where it just doesn't seem right that somebody-
The curb cut.
Building a curb cut that actually goes into our, past our property line would make it so that we had to, you know, basically head straight into the middle of our building and, and then go around to get in.
I'm, I'm wondering, just a question for staff, if, if the curb cut were simply enlarged so that both driveways used the same curb cut, is that an acceptable solution to the staff, assuming that a variance is granted?
I believe that the city engineer would need to weigh in on that, and planning staff and the city engineers should probably meet with the applicant and owner to come to a solution that works for all parties.
Okay, yeah, because if the, if the curb cut of the next-door property at 202- Okay, yeah. Cause if the, if the curb cut of the next door property at 202 actually extends into the 204 property, that doesn't quite seem fair either. Yeah, okay. Any more comments or questions? If you, if you think you've learned enough from tonight, then thank you very much and we'll move on to the rest of the agenda.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, we might have some other public comment on this if you wanna, we've got other people sitting here that.
We have people that wish to make public comments?
They might, I don't know.
Yeah.
Really?
I, I asked once and got no response, but.
Well, I, I didn't plan on talking, but we're right across the, the road.
Your name and address, sir?
Oh, my name is Gary Geisbrecht. I, we're at 203 and 205 Kenyatta, just right across the street from Richard and Mary. And we don't have any problem with our parking. Like they say, they've got maybe three clients a week. So they, there's, there's a lot of parking issues on our street, but they're not it. They're not the problem. And they're wonderful people to have be neighbors to, so we fully encourage this project, so we're, we're excited about it.
Okay, very good. I guess that would qualify as public comment on this agenda item, wouldn't it? Yeah. Okay. Anyone else to wish to speak on this agenda item? All right, then we'll close that public hearing, which I neglected to open, I guess. Public comment period, okay. And we will move on then to item four, the list for our meeting next Tuesday with the city council, the special joint meeting. And the recommendation is to approve this list. I think this is what we talked about at the August 15th.
Exactly. So these were the items discussed on the 15th. We figured since we had one more meeting before the joint meeting, which is next Tuesday, so just a reminder. But we figured before we took it to the council, we'd bring it back since we had this extra chance just to see if any changes are desired or, or any, anything wants, needs to be added or removed, so.
Okay, any, any comments from the commission here on, on this list? I was personally surprised that, that the cleanup of Title X was not part of the list. Maybe, maybe it shouldn't be at this time, but I think the time is gonna come fairly soon when the city council is gonna tell us to go fix it.
Yeah, I, that is one item that I think, if I remember right, on the 15th, we talked about this and then we went to the Title X item was next on the agenda. But that could be an item that we could add just to bring back and discuss with the council.
Or staff assistance or some consultant assistance on the cleanup of Title X.
We asked for staff assistance and I think staff suggested a consultant for assistant. But should we, should we add that item to the list? I mean, this is a one-hour meeting and I'm gonna be surprised if we get through these four, frankly.
Usually it's like one or two at most.
If I could offer a suggestion, the Title X update in part can be baked into item number four because the Title X update encompasses kind of three broad ranges. Number one is the fix the typos, which can be done relatively easily and quickly and probably doesn't need a consultant. Number two is assess whether the provisions are what this commission and council want them to be and assess whether review authorities should be adjusted, development standards need to be adjusted, neighborhood planning needs to be set, kind of broader questions. And then number three is should the, how to change the provisions of Title X to match what is changed with the general plan and.
And state law.
And the portions of it that are unlawful. And certainly if there's any portion of it that is directly unlawful, it can't be enforced and also advised as we've done with the secondary unit ordinance before we amended that to comply with the state IDU law. The second and third pieces of that, the kind of the broader Title X update pieces are perhaps best tackled by the commission and the council in the course of the general plan update. As is typically done when a city updates its general plan, particularly here where the general plan is portions of it from, are, are recent and, and great from 2014 and portions of it are older and great from the late eighties and perhaps could bear some updating. In that process, cities typically will do an update of the general plan at varying levels and at varying price points and at varying levels of depth and community involvement, but certainly it's never done quickly. And thus, it's never done without public, public participation and transparency. That update results in a new general plan. Then a city adopts and amends its zoning code to match the new general plan. That's often the order in which it's done. So a comprehensive update of Title X, a soup-to-nuts grand review of it may not make the most sense at this moment pending the general plan update discussion. And so my suggestion would be to bake the two together and ask the council for, and discuss with the council the extent to which the city and the council will be discussing this, they did on Tuesday, August 28th and they are again, I believe it's on the agenda for the meeting a week from yesterday, September 11th, to take a look at how the council and this commission wish to do the general plan update. To what level of extent, to what, just one element, many elements, all the elements, piece thereof? What level of detail does the commission and council wish this, that update to be done? Is a great time to have the conversation about how do you, does the commission and council want to approach the Title X update? And in addition, I would suggest asking the, the council for direction that staff and this commission work on the first piece I mentioned of Title X, the obvious fix-it updates. The typos and the more than a typo but clear, you know, every one of us reading it says, oh, that's just not right.
Internal references and.
Internal cross-references. As you know, just as we saw a couple tonight in the density bronze ordinance, portions of the one proposed were updating but were, had been rendered, rendered inappropriate because they cross-referenced a section that doesn't exist. There's other portions of this code or even things a little more substantive, but certainly something that's not going to be a grand policy choice. The grand policy choices are baked in the general plan first. As you know, the general plan is the city's constitution and it's, it's guidebook for development. That should be the first choice. That's my suggestion for how to approach those two points and thus it could be baked into the item already on your list. Thank you.
And so I, I take from, from your excellent summary here that what we might do is add some words to item four and say, including a subsequent update of Title X?
Correct.
Would that meet with the commission's approval?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the, our, our list being condensed down to these four items. I saw heads nod when we just spoke about we probably won't get through all of these in an hour. So I'm wondering if we need to now look at these and prioritize and bring forward that, those priorities. So if we only get through one top, one of these, it's the one we feel is our priority at the time.
Excellent suggestion. And since Kathy had told me offline that she will be unable to attend that, we should at least maybe push the landscape ordinance to the bottom of the list, figuring we won't get to that discussion.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I won't be at the meeting, but I know at a past, several past meetings, I did state and I would still follow through with, if we wanted to continue with the landscape ordinance, that I would definitely be willing to work on that as, in a subcommittee or whatever capacity. And the reason I think we may wanna keep it up towards the top is for probably, thinking about water, which really ties into the landscape.
Thinking about water.
Right, there's water, there's, you know, the climate change, there's, you know, how landscape affects our climate. Things like stormwater capture, soil building, all of those things are, I think are really important and tie into the water issues. So even though I'm not gonna be there, I would stress that I would keep that in the top two. And as I did say, I'm, you can say my name.
We would comment that you would be willing to take that on.
Right, that I would be, yeah, and anyone else, of course, who wants to, but I would, I will commit to that.
That would be, that would be a short discussion.
Yeah.
So we, we can leave it up front.
And of course, it's up to everyone else, but.
How about reordering the list otherwise? You brought up the topic, so what would your preference be?
Well, I'd, I'd like some, a reminder definition on the direction on housing policies that the council might want us to investigate. What, what does that include?
We talked about several items and I'm trying to remember. I know we talked about affordable housing, cluster housing, there's.
So that's all in that top?
There were four or five and maybe we can add those as, from the last meeting, that list from the last meeting in as kind of a subpoint to that one.
Bobby? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Bobby.
I think that actually visioning is at the top of the list because includes everything that you're talking about. And I think Kathy's suggestion about focusing on the downtown area is, is important and the right way to go. And this visioning is, is different than the general plan update. It will play a part in that, but it is different than the general plan update. And it's a guideline to talk about where in is our town going? And do we wanna allocate areas where we need housing or mixed-use projects in the downtown area? And how do we look at our streets and how do we make our city sustainable financially? And we need to look at the services that our city provides. For example, one of the issues that city council's starting to discuss is building and planning fees and you've heard me talk about that for over a year now. And, you know, we have to ask ourselves as a city when we provide a service, is this a money-making operation or is this a service to our citizens? If that's a service to our citizens, then where is the money generated that runs our city? And those are all the questions that go into this visioning process. So if we need to bring different kinds of businesses or companies into the town that will pay revenue, that will help support the town, that's something that needs to be looked at. If there's housing that needs to be added to the city, that needs to be looked at. And all of these pieces fit together like a jigsaw puzzle. How do we landscape it? What do we do with the streets so we catch the water? It's all part, I mean, we need to start with the big picture. We're gonna look at that bowling alley parcel again. We don't know how to make a decision on that because we don't have a big picture. I'd like to have a bowling alley. I mean, I don't know, you know, it's, I think that's, that's the, should be number one. And I think cleaning up the design guidelines is a quick question. Can city council provide staff time for that? And it sort of plays a part in that. And then all of these other things, it's not that they're not important, but I think that they're all part of the bigger picture.
Well, the items one through three might be fairly short discussions.
And let's start with the first one. You say start with the.
Well, I, I think you'll run out of time.
My thought would be that we'd save the long one for the end. But if we put the long one in front, it could very easily consume the entire hour.
Yeah, I would, I agree with Bobby. And I think that looking at the large picture is really fundamental and important. And that's where you talk about policy. And that's what we need to start with. And I just think that's, it, the general plan really needs work and needs to be brought up with what are the issues today that we're concerned with as a community? And you do have visioning as a part of that and then out of that you develop policy, you develop policy statements, which is an analysis of the problem. You develop policies that address the problem. And so I just see that as very important. And I was, just as a side note to that too, I think that you bring organization to, to this, you know, all this workload. I don't, does the, does the planning department have or community development have a work program at all? Because without a work program, you, you, how do you know what you're supposed to work on or give priority? You do have something like that.
Yeah, there's several, you know, work programs and project lists and things like that.
Okay. But again, the work on the general plan would give guidance to any work program that you presumably update every year and that relates to the budget. So it's just all around fundamental.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I know I've made this comment before, but I'm gonna mention it again. The joint meetings actually generated from our planning commission, I'm not sure if it was five or six, maybe it was seven years ago, but while I was on the planning commission and the original intention of having the joint meeting, at first it was just gonna be planning commission and then the other commissions also ended up having joint meetings, was to meet with the city council and have a visioning session. And we were actually talking about upgrading the general plan kind of amongst ourselves. But I, I guess I'm coming back to the original intention of why we had it. And it gets back to the very thing that you're saying. These other items do, I think they're, they're important, but they fall under that visioning and the general plan. And the reason we came up with that idea and made the request was we'd have projects come in and there was, there was, you know, there's some vagueness in the code or we just didn't know what the overall picture was, what did we want for this community? And in that process, we never really got it handled. We did a couple little, like one-hour things where everybody went around the table and said what they wanted the city to be about. And then it just kind of morphed into where it is right now. So I'm actually in favor of, of bringing back that visioning and asking the question. Not that I, I'm also in favor of doing these other items and like I said, I will commit to do that landscape portion. And, you know, maybe that happens simultaneously. But I know that the general plan is going to be looked at in the near future. I'm not sure what the date is. But starting that conversation now and, you know, whether it goes to workshops or joints, more joint sessions that are longer with the city council, starting now because we know everything takes a while, the process takes a while, I think it's a good idea.
How, how about if we move item four to the top and agree to end that discussion, say at a quarter to seven, and then knock out the other three items so that we have in those areas more specific direction from city council? Would that work?
Works for me.
Just one other comment on that. I mean, the whole housing policy thing, again, that's, that all starts with the general plan. It has its own element. And unless you can have a, a, a general plan housing element that you're happy with and that have discussed the problems and the issues and possible solutions, I, I, you just have nothing to go by in terms of, you know, attacking the problem piecemeal or whatever. So I just see that as a very significant part of the general plan update.
And, and the languaging in number four here is really, we're wanting direction on what our role is. So, you know, there's only specific narrow bandwidth that's our purview, that's gonna be our role in the general plan.
Land use and zoning, right, yep.
And that's what needs to be focused on. When I see, you know, languaging like visioning process, what comes up for me is, you know, do we have the skill set to do a proactive and efficient process? You know, as a group. I mean, that's one of the reasons the Carnegie Mellon project has come up and transitioned Ojai is because we didn't amongst ourselves necessarily have the skill set to facilitate a process, a visioning process.
Maybe ourselves and the city council in a workshop setting with the public
I, I think.
Can begin to approach that vision.
Yeah, I mean, I think all these other things will be tools in that, but for me, getting the. getting the city council to recognize that that's the big goal is the first step.
No, I, I, I agree. Um, a, a couple months ago, I remember we were speaking about the general plan, and it was, it was brought up that we could change, because, you know, a general plan takes a couple of years to update and then vote off and have finalized that we could change very specific things within the general plan without the whole thing being complete. So there's some housing policies that might.
Yeah, the housing element is periodically updated, certainly more than once since some parts of the general plan have been touched.
And, and that's why, for me, it's so important to really get what our role is with the general plan and the visioning, because we are getting projects in here, like the bowling alley and other projects. And, um, we have nothing new to go by. So it's like, well, so there's, there's no, we can make suggestions, but there's nothing that says, oh, th- this is no longer, you know, in the general plan, it's not allowed, or, you know, we, we're confined.
We need to reach the point where we have some basis for saying yes or no to an individual applicant.
Exactly. And, and so my concern is the length of time that transpires as we're continuing to get projects. There aren't that many that come through, um, you know, on a yearly basis. And then by the time general plan is, is done, there's not much land left and not much redevelopment happening, and it's kind of a done deal. Here's what we have for the next 20 years, you know, or 50 years. So, um, not to, you know, make rash decisions or, you know, push anything through, but there is an urgency to it, because we have to, you know, we're serving the community in the projects that come forward, yet we don't have anything updated to give us a definite yes or no to people, as you just mentioned.
Well, I think asking what our role is in the update and visioning includes the question of what is the update and envisioning process? Until that's defined for us, it makes little sense to us what our role is, but that may get the city council members to at least ponder what the, what the overall process is, and then give us some advice on what to do as a part of it. Uh, so we've had a suggestion from at least two commissioners that we move item four to, to the top of the list. Is that, that's the sense of the commission? Why don't we do that, then?
I think the key is you can be putting a time limit on it, and then.
Yeah, I think, I think we should sort of informally agree that we do want to hit the other three items, and so we'll reserve some time toward the end of the hour to do that.
So 40 minutes for number four, and then 20 minutes for the other three.
I have seen, uh, some cities now are putting estimated times on the agenda to try to keep people on pace. So we may want to try that, put a parentheses, estimated 40 minutes. And, and so I can do that on, on the, the one that we submit to council.
Nine and nine and two. It's only gonna take two to say what Kathy's gonna do with the landscape ordinance.
And whoever else wants to join in.
Yeah. Um, okay. Well, then I think you have a, you have a sense of what we'd like to do, James. All right, let's move on to item five, director decisions.
I did want to mention something really quick before we leave.
Sir.
I have a pending work project that same night of the joint meeting. Um, so I'm waiting for confirmation. I may or may not be at the joint meeting. But I can't turn down revenue if it's coming my way.
I probably cannot. I'm probably gonna miss that meeting also.
Oh, really?
So whoever's here needs to be very vocal.
Well, we need to get Chester there, or we won't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Oh.
The, the joint meeting can still occur even without a quorum, because we expect there will be a quorum of the council, which means it will be held as a council meeting plus commissioners in public.
Some part of the planning.
Some subset of the commission.
Okay.
The fact that there won't be a quorum of the planning commission is not going to be a legal impediment to doing anything, because as has just been discussed, the items on the agenda will be act, discussion items, not action items. So a quorum of the planning commission is not required, although, of course, the more the merrier.
Well, then I would request of the individual commissioners, and Chester, if you can pass the word to him, um, please, at least by Monday, let Sherry know whether you will be attending, so that we don't put out name signs for people that aren't gonna show up. Okay, let's go on to item five, director decisions. Any, any questions or any, anything of particular import from staff in this list?
No, we, we provided the list. I, nothing jumped out to me as anything particularly noteworthy, so answer questions if you have them.
I'm sorry to see so many dead oak trees.
Okay, any questions from the commission?
I'm just sorry to see so many dead oak trees. It's, you've, you've seen that all over town. Everything's so stressed.
We walk around town, and, and they have this sort of patina of brown leaves down.
Yeah, yeah. Everything's getting sunburned.
I do have a question, though.
Yes, ma'am.
So just, uh, what is the process, um, to, you know, with all these removal of oak trees? Do you, do you require an arborist report? And do you make it to be an arborist who's not removing the dead oak tree?
We, uh, do require that they submit a, a letter or arborist report that states the health of the tree, whether it's, um, an emergency permit that they're requesting, or if it's just they're removing it to make way for a project. Um, and then we consider the tree permit. Of course, if it's deemed that it's an emergency or hazardous tree, we're going to issue that as quickly as possible.
Um, but is there any policy to require an arborist who is different from the person or company who's removing the oak tree? Because that's a total conflict of interest in my, in my book.
I don't know that we even asked for the removal company.
May I comment on that? Um, as, as far as I know, unless it's been changed very recently, the person writing the report and the person, uh, or the company re, uh, doing the work are two separate companies. It's not allowed to be the same person or company.
Is it, is it in the code someplace that says?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
What about the oak tree there on Matilaha and Signal? Or the, I think that was an oak tree removed.
The one that was removed at the Oaks?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been a controversy going on for.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
That wasn't even mostly dead. It was dead, from what I could see.
Well, they can have a lot of brown on them, especially from the heat in July.
That tree was dead.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, I know the arborist who did it.
And we had two arborist reports on that one.
Yeah, they did.
You did, okay, okay. Uh, but is there, is there policy requirement for separate?
Yes. Um, Ojai Municipal Code, Section 41106, Subdivision A, Subdivision 3, states, "The arborist who prepares the report shall not participate in or profit from the removal, destruction, or relocation of the tree." So yes, it is required by the code.
Okay.
You have an arborist report, not from the same arborist who will be cutting the tree.
Okay.
Uh, and I wouldn't, uh.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's helpful. And staff won't comment on the one mentioned at Matilaha and Signal, the Oaks, as that, um, has been the subject of code enforcement in the past. Thank you.
And what happens, is there tree replacement required of some nature? And in light of the heat and the water and everything else, how, you know, what's, what's up with that?
So there, um, there's a couple different options, depending on the circumstances. So I guess we can't necessarily comment on a particular one, but there's, you know, mitigation fees or replacement can be required.
Only if the tree is not dead or hazardous.
Right.
With a further exception being if the tree's death was caused by negligence by a property owner. For example, you could imagine a homeowner who does a project and cuts through half a tree and doesn't bother to get a permit for it upfront, the tree's dead, but they caused the death. Thus, the mitigation fee would still be imposed. As you can see, it's a case-by-case determination, based on the facts of why that tree is proposed for removal.
But to answer your specific question, there is no tree replacement on a dead tree requirement?
With that exception.
These are not street trees. These are personal lawn creatures.
Street trees are handled by the public works.
Ray?
Um, I have a comment about trees. I guess an editorial about trees. Um, you know, some of the, some of the oaks are, are dying off because of the drought. A lot of them are just old. And, um, it's been a huge area of neglect in planting trees in the city and the valley. Um, um, there's a naivety about if we grow, about the fact that the more trees we plant, the more we affect the climate. And we can create a microclimate and a greenhouse zone by planting fast-growing trees. You know, polonias grow 10 feet a year. Um, and I think some attention really needs to go there. No, you, we can't force someone who takes out a dead tree on their private property to plant a new tree. But we can certainly educate people, and the city can, um, be much more proactive. And for that matter, Casitas Municipal District could be much more proactive in educating people about the microclimate we could be creating in the valley to generate our own rainfall because of the nature of what trees give.
Right, but Casitas has not been very proactive about determining that sort of thing in your water allotment, although other counties have done a much better job.
Kathy?
Uh, just a comment. Um, along those lines, I know that the, I mentioned this earlier with the last applicant that was up. I know our tree ordinance was modified, I think it was the beginning of January of 2017, I believe, or thereabouts. And, um, and it was more strict at one point. And I know that before that, you know, in 2016 and previous to that, it did need to be, there were certain issues that needed to be addressed, um, as far as like invasive species and what have you. Um, and once again, this is my opinion, I, I think at some point, we need to go back. And, and of course, I think city council, of course, would have to direct us.
Yeah, that would have to be put on a future agenda for the city council.
It would have to be on a future agenda.
For the commission to ask the council, perhaps in another joint meeting.
Exactly.
Would they want to revisit the tree ordinance?
Maybe at a future, um, uh, joint meeting, that that would go on and get, it needs to get revisited, because a lot of trees now that were either protected and couldn't be taken out now can be removed and/or there's no mitigation. And so that's probably the, I think, the first place or the first thing that we should look at. But suggestion.
And an action plan to plant so many trees per year. You know, in Australia and India after big fires, there's two companies in the world, one's out of the UK, they have a fleet of drones that come in and that fires little seed cannons, and they planted a million trees in one week. They planted 5,000 trees in one day in Australia and are reforested and then dumping water on them. You know, you do it at the right time of year. So, um, you know, though, I just want to keep encouraging that we're in the 21st century, and there's technology available to move things faster than we're, and, and still live simply and still have the kind of culture we want here, and use the technology and, and the ancient future brains of some of the people that, that live here and know how to work with the ecology, so, uh, we can really be an example of sustainability here.
Yes?
One last comment. Along those lines, at one point, the city of Ojai was, um, an Arbor City USA, had cer, the certification. And part of that certification is that the city was required to plant a certain amount of trees every year. So in other words, you're, you're, um, restocking your urban forest. You want an age diversity, you want new, young trees, you know, middle-aged and old, and of course, they're gonna transpire to keep the cycle going. But I, that, um, expired, I think, kind of by accident, from what I, I think it was a shift in, in staff members. And, but what that did do was the city had to plant a certain amount of trees every year. And, and at that point, we were doing planting oaks and getting grants every year. But that has since expired, and so along the lines of bringing back the, um, you know, revisiting potentially the, um, tree ordinance, we may also want to initiate that, the Arbor City, or, um, status and start that planting again.
Would you like us to say during the meeting that you're willing to work on the tree ordinance as well as the landscape ordinance?
Sure. I've already done a bunch of stuff.
Oh, all right.
We are the Tree City after all.
Well, we were.
We were. Aren't we still? No, we're not still? Oh, we better get it back, then.
All right.
That's what I meant to say, Tree City, not Arbor City.
Let us move on to agenda item six, future agenda items. Um, we see next Tuesday's meeting, September 19th. Um, the 214 West Aliso, I think, is the corner of Kenyatta. And that's a property that my wife and I walk by regularly. I think, I don't know what's, what property upgrade means, but there's an awful lot of work that's ongoing there at the moment. Um, could you give us an idea of what the, what the property upgrade is beyond that? Or are these people asking for forgiveness instead of permission?
I'm gonna recommend that staff provide a detailed discussion of the project when it's on your agenda at the next meeting.
Sure.
Not tonight.
Okay. Um, the other one that I'm curious about is October 3rd. I may not be here. The hip vegan restaurant, they're looking for a CUP for outdoor dining. Is that, that requires a CUP?
To serve alcohol.
Okay, so this, this.
It's design review for the outdoor dining, and it's a CUP for the alcohol, serving alcohol.
Got it, okay. But that requires a state license as well as permission from the city.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on future items?
If I could add one thing real quick, uh, and October 16th, which isn't reflected on here, um, the city council recently requested a special council, uh, planning commission joint meeting regarding, um, the city's, uh, transportation grants, ATP gr, uh, grants. And, uh, they had asked the, um, public works director about maybe a month ago to start putting together a large public outreach kind of meeting that the planning commission and the council would attend. And so the date that's been proposed for that is October 16th, it's at 6:00 PM. Uh, so we are gonna be polling planning commission to see if, if, uh, you're available for that, but that would be, you know, another meeting.
I plan to be.
It's a Tuesday, the 16th.
And is that at 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
That's the Tuesday in between the two council meetings, Tuesdays, okay?
I have a question of staff, if I may, only, um, for my own education, 'cause I think five people have asked me what's happening at the Old World University property. And I have no idea. And it didn't come before us, so I don't, and I haven't seen it on an agenda. Is there anything you can say that's?
First question might be, is it still the World University, or is it some new property owner there that's?
It is.
It's Jeff Becker's property.
So, yeah, I would love to hear what Suzanne has to say about that, or someone. You've asked a good question there, Ray.
It, it did have some director's exception for some, um, exterior upgrades to the property that you would do more as a shell permit pending a future tenant. I know the property owner is working on future tenants, but they have not resolved what those future tenants are going, going to be as of yet. Once they have a use, correct.
Okay, it seems to me there, there's a residential structure on the property.
Yes.
And then other structures that look like they could be offices or classrooms or.
Right.
Or whatever, okay. But the World University is gone?
Yeah, it's gone.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Ojai will never be the same.
Lot of people knew nothing about.
Entirely quirky enough to be in Ojai. Okay, 1202 East Ojai Avenue, that is the bowling alley property? Okay.
So it's back to being called the hotel?
And brew pub.
Hotel and brew pub, and somehow restaurant has disappeared, and hotel has appeared in its place. Okay.
Future hotel is now the hotel.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Any other questions of staff on upcoming agenda items? All right, planning commission liaison. Um, you can all see who's been assigned what. Uh, just off the top, Bobby. You can all see who's been assigned what. Uh, just off the top, Bobby and I have tentatively agreed to swap assignments on the city council because I expect to be out of town on the 9th of October, but that is still pending Bobby's decision to do that.
I think, I think it's, I think it's going to be fine. I, I.
If it isn't, maybe someone else would swap with me.
Yeah.
When do you need to swap?
Uh, the Oc, October 9th, as it stands, I expect not to be in town.
Would you be able, I'm sp, I'm assigned to September 11th, which is the same night we have the joint meeting?
Sure.
And I'm, I'm going to be gone, so I, I'm.
I'll be, I'll be there.
You're going to be there?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll swap.
Well, why don't we swap those two?
Okay, so I'm going to keep the 23rd and you're gonna.
Okay, and Sherry, you'll just update that for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Reports, city council, August 28th, Commissioner Merk?
Um, I'll keep this really short. Um, it was a long city council meeting. I've, I've watched a portion of the tape, but not the whole thing. But as you may know, uh, the city council turned down our, um, tiny homes ordinance, um, the same sort of vote that we had only the other way. It was a three to two vote, um, after probably two and a half, three hours of discussion and, uh.
Didn't they ask us to do it?
They did.
They asked us to look into it. We did and they didn't like what we came up with, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, the original motion was to approve what we sent forward as we submitted it word for word. And that motion did not get a second. Then a compromise was proposed, which lost three to two. Which, I mean, adjusted some of the terms of when things would happen or, I don't know. I don't remember now. It was a very interesting meeting, though.
Yes. Um, I also attended the MAC meeting on August 20th, um, which was interesting. There was only one proposal on the agenda, which was, um, where the massage studio used to be in Miners Oaks. There were three lots there that are under one owner and they wanted to combine those together and put in a restaurant and some retail stores. And, um, I actually, I found the meeting really disturbing. I left before the end of the meeting because there was such an adversarial current in the, the, um, audience. And I just felt like the, it was really difficult for the owner to get a fair hearing there and the, the commissioners seemed kind of intimidated by all the jeering and, uh, comments in the, in the crowd.
Oh, you should have been there when they were talking about RV parking on the streets.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just, uh, anyway, they ended up, the, the MAC did approve, um, and recommend to the plantings, the county planning, that, um, this project go ahead. It's a really nice looking project. But of course, it will use some water. They will plant some trees, which the leaves will fall off of and, you know, it will impact the neighbors somewhat, but it was, um, it was an interesting exercise. Made me really appreciate our, our meetings here and the structure that we have.
These meetings are a whole lot more.
It makes a big difference if people, it makes a huge difference if people have to come up to the dais in the front and speak versus sitting in your seat and just sort of shouting out whatever you feel like, yeah. It was, it was fascinating to me. Anyway.
Might be a good suggestion to the MAC.
Well.
Change the protocol.
They would, they would have to restructure their whole.
Up here in front of everyone and speak.
Yeah, yeah. It makes a big difference, I think.
Cause that, that RV parking session, people almost came to blows.
Mm-hmm.
And it's nice, the podium got moved up, so it's, uh, more central.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised the MAC doesn't have a podium. I mean, even.
They don't. They, you know.
The sanitary district.
When I first started going there years ago, they didn't even have an American flag. Everybody would turn around and face the parking lot because there was an American flag in the parking lot, you know, to do the pledge of allegiance. They now have a little desk set that goes on the, on the table, but.
It's a low budget operation.
Yeah, it's.
All right, I see, uh, Commissioner Jagiello is not here. Um, Kathy, if you could synopsize today's kind of short complete streets meeting?
One thing I didn't mention at the, our last meeting that I wanted to, excuse me, didn't have my mic on, that I wanted to mention was, um, I, Sherry had actually sent out a notice from, um, Steve Bennett's office in, um, gosh, I think it might have been the end of July. And it was for a workshop to be held down in Oakview for a, um, multimodal highway development project. And it's actually a Caltrans grant, but it covers the area from, uh, it's a six mile distance starting in Casita Springs. And I'm not sure exactly the exact endpoint, but it's somewhere between Villanova and, um, Baldwin Road or Highway 150, but in that general neck of the woods there. And, um, it would, first of all, it was really fun to, to go and I went as a complete streets chair. Um, but they had a really good turnout. We got to go around and look at the sites, or portions of the site. And, um, and then we did, um, they had maps out and everybody went to tables and participated. You know, we did post-its and comments and wrote on them. And, um, everyone who attended and, you know, especially the people that lived in that area, they were really excited about it. But it's really all about bringing, um, pedestrian access, bike access, street trees, and more of a main street application to Oakview, um, because there's, you know, two lanes on each side in that portion.
Instead of the existing freeway through the middle of town.
And everybody speeds through there. And I have been to some past MAC meetings, you know, as a planning commissioner, where Caltrans was doing a presentation. And this has happened a couple of times, a group of, um, commercial property owners in Oakview that, you know, they'd all get up and speak and let's say, we've got to do something here because everyone just drives through Oakview. It's, there's no, um, main street or, or downtown feel to it. And it's affecting our businesses. And so, um, yeah, there were, there were actually some of those commercial property owners that were at the workshop too. So there was really a positive feedback from everyone and, you know, they've got a school over there and there was issues about that. And they talked about, um, creating possibly some gateway. So you've arrived, you've slowed down and adding parking onto, onto, I guess that's Ventura Avenue there, the 33. So anyway, I just want to share, I was really excited. And they have another one coming up and I, now I realize I didn't bring the date. I think it's October 20th, if anybody wants to participate. Um, but I wanted to say that. And then today we had our regular meeting and our staff person, um, our public works director, Greg's, Greg Grant was there. He's been super busy for quite a few months, so we haven't had him at our meetings. So, um, but generally what we did was he gave us an update on the ATP grant, which, um, Mr. Vega announced that we're going to be having the workshop on. So I encourage everybody to show up for that. And if you're not familiar, the ATP grant is, covers basically Ojai Avenue, Avenue starting around, um, Gridley Road, going all the way through town to the Y and then the Y to El Robel or, um, Cuyama. And the, um, items on the grant, or what the grant deals with are pedestrian access or connections, same thing with bicycle, street tree planting. And those are the. The meeting, the joint meeting, I think you said was the.
We're proposing it for October 16th.
Oh, 16th, right.
And we're still just making sure it works for the planning commission and the council.
So it's good.
We was also discussed today that there might be a, uh, successive meeting on October 20th.
All right. So the other things that he mentioned were they were going to do two, uh, general public meetings. And I don't think they've been announced, but, you know, that'll come out. But I believe there's the 20th and the 29th, one's on a Tuesday night and the other would be on a Saturday. And those will be announced by the city as to the time and location, but that's for the public to come in and comment. So I encourage everyone to, to partake in that. This is really exciting. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, very exciting. Then we also reviewed the, uh, the flashing beacons. So in other words, that's similar to the, uh, crosswalk at Ventura Street on Ojai Avenue. That was our first one we put in. And of course, things have changed since then. The one at Whispering Oaks just went in and they just got the, four of them on Maricopa permitted, permitted. And then also there'll be, um, Kenyatta Blanch and Park, they just got permitted. And so those are something exciting to look forward to. And.
These are all upgraded, lighted, flashing beacon type pedestrian crossings.
Highway crossings, yeah. And, um, let me just say, I'm just looking really quick, um, what else we did. I think that's, that's kind of generally, generally what we talked about. And there's smaller items. So once again, complete streets meets the first Wednesday of the month, 2:30 to 4:30 here at city hall. We're open to anyone who wants to come in and have fun and participate.
2:30.
2:30 to 4:30 on, uh, the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay, any other business before the commission? Hearing of none. We're adjourned at 8:22.